City of America to the Republic, which is saying one nation under God, individual.
Thank you. Sorry, we're a few minutes late. Technical difficulties. So the first thing on our agenda this morning is a consent agenda, approval of minutes from eight six, approval of payroll, approved and signed contracts for special funding, approved vouchers, approved and signed monthly earnings and collections from the clerk, clerk of district court sheriff, and approve out of state travel for the events department and approve and allow chair to sign FY two twenty five can a CPI contract. Project Ford.
We approve that, Chair. Second.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as listed. Any discussion? Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Closed. Motion passes. Nine thirty-five. Next thing on our agenda is a public hearing for the Bentley appeal. Is there anyone here to speak on that? Forward please. If I could ask you to state your name and use the microphone, please.
Todd, excuse me, Todd Bentley. I guess I don't really understand why it is that I'm here in the in the denial. I was I was asking basically to move my sign. I've had this this gunsmithing gun shop thing in my backyard for the last eight years. It was permitted eight years ago and I had gone over the it's not a commercial property, it's residential. So we had gone over what's allowed. The terms. Getting away from me right at the moment. But I'm allowed some business in residential property. And we went over that and I understood that I was allowed a sign. Twenty-four square feet was the maximum that I could do and I've done that and I put that sign on the side of the shop. I was wanting to move it out to the road and actually make it smaller, make it better looking, put it in the back of an old wagon. And verbally I was told that's okay. Shouldn't be any problem. Square footage was 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 much less than twenty-four square feet. Then I was told, no, you can't you can't do that because of covenants. I belong to the subdivision. And because of the covenants in that subdivision, you're not allowed to sign. My argument is covenants, I I I've called the state to see what their definition of covenants is and it's a private contract. So. And and basically in the denial letter, it it said planning and zoning doesn't really have anything to do with private contracts in these covenants. However, you're denied. And if it's denied on on county regulation, I'm good with that. I can follow regulations. I I I have a federal firearms license. I I follow regulations all the time. But I don't see that. There was also a little addition off to the side of the building. I'm shifting around. Inside, I'm not changing my my the square footage that I was permitted. Cottage industry, I believe that was. It just hit me cottage industry, I believe the term that that we talked about eight years ago. I understood it to be under a thousand square feet. I'm I've stayed inside of that. I'm still inside of that. I'm just kind of shifting around my floor plan inside the building. And in order to do that, I wanted a little six foot by twelve foot lean-to shed on the backside of the building to move some of the stuff for storage purposes to get it out of my way so that I can move this around. And that was part that was denied. So.
You? Any questions for Mr. Bentley right now?
Madam Chair, Mr. Bentley Todd. Do you, to your knowledge, are are any of the residents within the subdivision opposed to to have been opposed to your business? I think it probably over that may contain a compliance issue.
Yeah. No. Many, many of the people in the subdivision come over, you know, do business with me. Nobody's ever said, hey, we've got a problem with you.
I'm just, I'm part of the public hearing. I'm just a comment, you know, the the subdivision which he's he's part of was very early stages of subdivisions, if you will. I was a little kid at the time, in the seventies. His property is somewhat unique. If you look at the map, the highway actually cuts it out. The original flat of that lot land before subdividing was was before the highway. They missed the corner, March on Canyon. So his highway ends up cutting a little triangle. So then when they sent it, when a guy named Fast Eddie, Eddie Ricketts, and he had that name for a reason, there was a lot of shady things that happened at the time. But his his particular log got cut off in the corner. So even though he's in the subdivision, he's totally separated by the highway. So I think this is a very unique situation. I know covenants are are a gray area for us, but I think we need to look at at more than just the fact that there's covenants against it. Public hearing continued.
Other comments at the time?
Madam Chair, just a question. Mr. Bentley, you made several comments that I do talk to. You have verbal authorizations. Who were you talking to? You've got verbal authorization.
Yeah, when I got when I got my original permit to to put the building up and everything, that was with Kim Dilivin.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I just didn't know if you were talking planning or who you were talking to.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I was planning, yeah.
This is a public hearing. So at this time, I'd ask if there's any public that would like to comment on this. You may turn to Mr. Mike.
Madam Chair, thank you. So staff brought this to my attention. I was not a party to those discussions. When Kim Dilivin was here, I don't I don't know what's discussed.
Would you identify?
Oh, I'm sorry, Joy Hill, planning director. So it was brought to my attention that Mr. Bentley had looked for a building permit to add a shop to the property, which would be a storage, some sort of shed for storage to add to his gunsmithing use. In two thousand sixteen, staff issued a permit for a five hundred and fifty-six square foot shop building to be used for gunsmithing. Five hundred and fifty-six square feet. Kim Dilivin issued the permit. It was for a minor home occupation in a shop building to the northeast of the residence. Since that time, the the building has been expanded. There were no permits on file for that expansion. Staff has written in the report that I think the existing size of the structure with everything added on is eleven hundred and seventy-two square feet. So that's not what was permitted in two thousand sixteen. Mr. Bentley had asked to put this addition of a shop for storage for this gunsmithing type of use in addition to a porch. We, of course, the porch addition is a separate situation, but the shop, in my opinion, is an expansion of the use. In looking further, there's advertising that it's a gun store. And so that obviously is not the same, in my opinion, as if you're doing personal gunsmithing. Now, I wasn't here in two thousand eighteen. I don't know what the discussion was as to what gunsmithing even meant. So I'll just put that in there as well. So the covenants for this subdivision quarter circle for our ranch subdivision, it's a declaration of restrictions. And in them, it says, the property in the subdivision will be put to no other use than residential and recreational purposes. Each family unit shall be used as a residence for a single family and for no other purposes, except that an owner may use a portion of his unit for an office or studio, provided that the activities therein shall not interfere with the quiet enjoyment or comfort of any other owner or occupant. Further, there shall be no, there shall not be permitted or maintained a nuisance on said property, nor the use of said property or buildings or structures located thereon for the purpose of conducting any trade, business, occupation, or profession, nor for any commercial purpose, whether legal or not, except as provided otherwise herein. Further, no for sale or for rent signs or window displays or advertising shall be maintained or permitted on any part of the property. So the sign that Mr. Bentley had requested, and I have the sign permit application, it is to have a Clark's Fork Trading Company in its own title. It's referencing business. And in my opinion, that sign would be an advertising sign, which is expressly prohibited by those covenants. So I understand Mr. Bentley's concern about the county's position on covenants. We do not enforce them. So for instance, had someone already violated the covenants, we would not go in and fix that situation unless it was in violation of the county regulations. However, we don't ignore them. So it, in my opinion, would look very ill upon the board. Should you, you know, if should we move forward and issue something with the knowledge that it is expressly prohibited by recorded covenant, or in this case, a declaration of restrictions? And so my opinion is that we should not proceed with issuing the permits because we would be basically ignoring the wishes of the residents in the subdivision for their recorded covenant.
So would you explain the process if if there is no objections from the neighbors and they're all okay with this use? Isn't it possible to just get a updated covenant?
Yes, and that's what we suggest to folks who have covenants that don't support what they want to do. You know, go talk to your neighbors, go talk to the people in the subdivision and see if you can get the covenants amended. Or, you know, we've discussed things so far as like even a written waiver, you know, hey, we'll let Bob do whatever he wants on this particular property. But I have questions about how that would be legitimized, you know, would those signatures need to be notarized? Should that be recorded? I believe it should so that it would be on the record. It's almost an amendment to the covenant in that regard, but we don't have anything to that effect on this property.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Question for staff. How many people are living in that property or in that subdivision right now?
I'm not sure how many properties are in quarter. I think it's at least forty, maybe. Is that about right? Yeah. Forty, forty-two, he's saying?
Just a question for Mr. Bentley. When you first started your your business there, were you aware of the covenants in that subdivision?
I was aware that there that there was covenants. I'd never seen them. Somebody had told me, you know, years later that, oh, there are covenants here. Okay. I I didn't get the hard copy of those covenants until we just started this. Probably probably in May.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Yes, sir. If you would come forward and please use the microphone and identify yourselves for the recording.
I'm Paul Burling. I'm a neighbor to Todd. I live within about a mile of him. And I would just like to say that Todd has been a wonderful neighbor and his business is a success in Clark. It is a benefit to the community. And the people that have know about it, such as Lloyd here where the way Todd's land sits and stuff. We really don't see a problem with any of this. There's no reason why, I mean, signs, Lloyd can attest to, we got signs everywhere. There's rules, regulations, but signs go up everywhere. As far as the building, I don't see a problem with any of it. The thing that I would like to say is how much of a benefit it is. I sit on the fire district board out there and we battle trying to raise taxes to support our services. Very, very few businesses in Clark. It's all residential. And the state has always said we need to diversify. Todd is diversifying, doing a great job. So I am in total support of what he's trying to do here.
Are you a resident of that subdivision or not?
No.
Okay, you're just close by. Thank you. Is there any other public comments? Any other public comments? You moved and seconded to close the public hearing. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
You want to oppose? Motion passes. Public hearing is closed. Discussion and commissioners?
Madam Chair, just a question for Commissioner Teal. So this, and maybe Commissioner Bentley as well, but this particular chunk of land, it's the only piece of land in that subdivision separated by road?
I believe so.
It's it's the only?
Yeah, and if you look at your share point down on page about page four, it shows an aerial, you can see the highway cutting it off. Madam Chair, if I if I could, I'd like to bring your attention to the restriction of whatever you want to call them. And it it very specifically says that if you want to use covenants, why it's a negative, you can use it as a positive. Activities shall not interfere with quiet enjoyment of the other. Because of this unique situation where this highway does separate completely from any others, it does not interfere with the quiet, and that's written right into the covenants, shall not interfere with the enjoyment and comfort of other owners and tenants. So I mean, that kind of allows him to do this. We've already issued allowing to have somewhat of a business there in eight years past. I guess where I'm I'm leaning his favor simply because I don't want to open a can of worms because where do you end with these covenants? There's so many restrictions in covenants that moving forward from the color of the house, the the light, type of lighting, the square footage. If we we don't have enough staff and time to to research every permit issued by the county, we ensure that that all covenants are are covered. And I guess my my point is these covenants actually allow him to do it as well.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I guess I understand where Lloyd's coming from and I I somewhat agree with him. I I take a little bit of an issue that that he's continued to grow without permits. That's the only the only issue, right?
The other thing is a lot of things that happen in covenants, we don't have any permits to deal with. We deal with building permit and subject permit and signs permits, basically. And those fall under, whether it's commercial or or whatever, and we do those things with zoning in our role. But I, as a member of a subdivision, when I bought my land, I looked at what was allowed there through both the county and the covenants and assumed that those would all be followed. And I think it's kind of hard to hit one against the other, which is kind of what this does. It pits the county against the covenants of the subdivision. If we approve the permit, then we're saying, yeah, it's okay to have a business there where it's fully recorded that the people that hit the subdivision said they don't want any businesses in. So it's it's kind of a really gray area, and I hope it's something we don't forget as we start moving through this regulation process as to whether covenant should be mentioned in there or not. If we're going to take a look at those, which is a little different than in the last thirty or forty years, I think we have to decide if we're going to play a part in those or not. But if we if we grant the permit and the neighbors, in this case, maybe not, but in some cases, the neighbors may come out with the fact that, no, we don't want any businesses here, and it says right here they couldn't. Then those neighbors are required to hire an attorney and fight that back. Yes, the county gave them a permit to do it. I, there's a catch here. It's kind of tough to to deal with. I understand your situation and I'm not positive or negative one way or the other right now on that. It's just the overall picture as to how the county should handle this.
I think this, Madam Chair, I think the plan is in several ways, but if you have, if you have no opposition from neighbors, get the covenants amended. They're, they were, whether you saw them or didn't see them, they were there when you bought the property.
I'd I called the Secretary of State to to find out about, you know, about this whole subdivision business. And this Little Rocky Land Development Company that had started this, I said, you know, is any of this? Does does it have anything? And and here's something that I've that I've been thinking of, and I understand that the board's position on all these. And where I keep going back to is that a covenant is a private contract. No different than between me and my buddy that I I bought a pickup from. I I got a month behind on payments and today I'm I'm going down to get plates and the treasurer says, we're not giving you your plates. It's a private contract. And on top of that, this particular contract, the the state doesn't recognize it. They said Little Rocky Land Development Company began and then ceased to exist in nineteen seventy-seven. It it didn't follow through. It started with a couple of people that, yes, were a corporation and then failed to file. And here we are, it's two thousand twenty-four. The Supreme Court of Wyoming recently ruled that when a subdivision tries to enforce covenants, when when it doesn't really exist, those covenants are null and void. This would be the case of Coke versus Gray, and that was just this April that they decided that.
These covenants are recorded, though. How can they say they don't exist? I mean, is that what you're?
It it may be. I mean, the the covenants exist. I get that. It's right here. It's in paper and print. But yet they're null and void.
Why would they be null and void?
Because the corporation ceased to exist. They they did not, it's called, it's called first to breach. So they breached the contract first. The the subdivision did. So therefore, the 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 residents of the subdivision are aren't under any obligation to follow all these rules. My my point being, I mean, I'm going off in the weeds here, but that's that's my point, is that as the board, you know, I'm not a lawyer. I've watched a lot of YouTube videos, but I'm working my way up. But I mean, it's just a quagmire of, well, this is still legit and this isn't. And and there's a ton of stuff in that subdivision. I I know I I don't want to call attention to anybody and get anybody else in trouble, but I do know of two other businesses in this, inside that subdivision that, to the best of my knowledge, they'd never got a permit to be a business, but yet they're operating as a business. In fact, a buddy of mine just got a permit to put up a sizable shop for his business. And we talked about this because I said, oh, I'm in the middle of this and I'm being denied. And so he didn't say anything. So I'm just going to go in and get a building permit and see what happens. And he did, and then it went right through.
But we probably didn't know it was for a business.
That's right. That's right.
Madam Chair, question for staff. Is this subdivision filed and platted? And is it under under county or state law, a platted subdivision?
It is a platted subdivision. It is recorded in the county or county clerk's office. And I'd just like to read a a portion of the covenant, if you don't mind. All of the easements, restrictions, conditions, covenants, charges, assessments, obligations, and agreements herein set forth shall affect and bind and become liens against all of the aforementioned real property and all of each of the separate parcels thereof and shall run with and against the land in each respect and instance. And the owners thereof, any or and or of any interest therein are made for the direct and mutual reciprocal benefit of each and every separate parcel therefore. Basically, it's saying that this runs with the land. Now, I think we all know when people subdivide, their intent is not to keep the land. Right? So if if this was just bound to Little Rocky Land Development, as they were the owners and developers, then no covenants would ever stand. If that's the case, the intent is for the covenants to run with the land. And then there are obviously provisions within the covenants that direct people as to how they can amend them or abolish them or whatever that may be. So once recorded, obviously, that puts us on notice. It puts the public on notice. It puts buyers on notice that there are binding easement or covenant that apply to the property.
Madam Chair, one more question for staff. At this point, we're simply denying a sign?
No, so there's two permit applications. One is for a shop, like an addition for storage that he wants to have associated with the use, and then the other is for the sign.
We have about four minutes on this one unless we continue.
I just got to say, Madam Chair, this is very difficult just simply because we have a a a resident that is trying to follow the rules. He applied for the permits and he has been existence in the same capacity for quite some time. It was approved by the county previously. The sign moving it out to the road, I don't know if that's a a make or break. It's it's condensing it down, it does fall within our regulations. And and I think we need to look at this uniquely as to the separation. The other thing directly behind him is a story to this portion. So I mean, it's not like it's a rare entity out there. So I mean, and I'm I'm still very concerned about entering into our decisions being made on private contracts, if you will, like covenants, moving forward because if they meet a certain criteria for the county and it follows those four permitting processes and trying to follow our county rules. I'm I'm just concerned that we were opening something up, you know, from everything with the crazy covenants could be written in the future.
Madam Chair, the concern I have is we're always afraid to cover our history with this. What's going to come back and find us? That's that's what I'm concerned of. You know, like, you know, what he was saying, he didn't even know about covenants exactly. It seems to be put on the back burner for a lot of these property sales and such. We don't really pay attention to it until it actually comes up. I'd like to see it through for this, but I'm still to the point of covering our backside. And how will they come back if a neighbor comes up and says, wait a minute, it's supposed to enter a covenant? Cover. So. I can go either way.
So if we put question, are we looking at two separate appeals or one?
It it's one appeal, but on a decision on two applications, but really, if your decision is to uphold, that will stand. If your decision is to overturn, then we would issue those permits. So it's two permits, but one decision.
Is there any way we're, Madam Chair, is there any way we can separate these? I think the building permit itself, I mean, I don't see how we can restrict what he does in that additional building permit falls under the square footage or requirements. What he does within that building is then up to him. And between him and and the neighbors and everybody.
Madam Chair.
You know, separate the building permit, the 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 permit for the building permit versus the signed permit.
So if we were to uphold the appeal, he has an option to come back and get a building to moderate building. But it may be denied.
If we uphold the planning and zoning decision. Then he can come back and just ask for a second permit. But she's going, I think it would be denied on the square footage situation or?
It's being denied based on the use.
Okay.
Not on the building. Like, if he just wanted to put up a building to, like, store his paper towels in for his house. That's private. As soon as he's doing it associated with a business, which it is, it's storage for his gun shop or gun store business. Then that is like I'm increasing nonconformity. Which I can't do, um, and it's also in opposition to the covenants. And and just for the record, also, as mentioned, the original permit was for a five hundred and fifty six square foot structure, which has now been more than well, almost tripled in size without a permit also. So, I mean, it it's I it's already bigger than it's supposed to be for what it was intended to be permitted for originally.
Man, this whole thing, the original permit, five hundred and fifty six, that itself is against covenants. There's a covenants in that subdivision, a restriction in that covenant, that minimum is six hundred square foot.
But the part I don't know, Commissioner Teal, is what did gunsmithing mean? Was it his personal gunsmithing?
I'm just saying, you just allowed a building where we live eight years ago for a five hundred and fifty six square foot building that is under the minimum regulation within those covenants. All those covenants say that the minimum building size in that in in the in the Ricketts subdivision is six hundred square feet. If you read deep into it.
Okay, but the building was five hundred and fifty six square feet.
Saying the minimum should have been six hundred.
Right. Oh, oh, in these covenants?
Yes.
And again.
So.
I I don't know what to tell you in that regard. I don't know if they had the covenants sold at that time.
Word this. Probably not word this correctly, but I'm gonna ask it anyway. If we uphold planning and zoning's decision. Nothing. Happens. For the business as it exists today, correct?
I'm s- I'm sorry. Say that again, Madam Chair.
If we uphold planning and zoning decision, there are no new permits. Or no county permits in this situation. Nothing changes for the businesses as it exists today.
Um, well, I mean, technically. There. They've expanded in violation of the rules since two thousand sixteen. So technically, we would issue a notice of violation for an unpermitted expansion of the structure. Um, but I I'm not, uh. If if you uphold my decision, we will not issue the building permits that had been requested.
Mr. Bentley, are you opposed to meeting with your neighbors and and amending or abolishing these covenants?
Um. I I'm opposed to trying to get a bunch of cats into a box. Because that's what that's what this would be. Uh, and I have thought of that. I I have thought of it, have talked to several other residents about, you know, maybe can we reorganize this thing? Because there there's nothing. There's there's no committee. There's no board. There's nothing. So we we have to start from scratch. They they said, oh, my gosh, get away from that quick. Uh, I I'd like to add something, though, that a- any of the the smaller buildings, the square footage that that's been mentioned here. Has not been added since two thousand sixteen, since that permit. It has not been added. I have not added anything. Any of those buildings that may be unpermitted were were previous to that. I'd also like to add that several years after my opening, that Kim came out personally, out to the store. We visited. Did a transfer firearm for him, this and that. So.
Okay, we need to do one of two things, either take action on this one or or continue through different.
Okay. Hold on. Okay, we're gonna have to digest this a little bit. Okay?
Continue the public hearing. Make a decision later.
And Madam Chair, I I would like for you to maybe, if you can send out a a mailer or postcards to your neighbors. Um, find out if there's any opposition to what your plan is. And if you come back with no opposition from any of those neighbors, I'll feel better about um, granting you permit. Um, but if there's one neighbor that pops up and comes back at the county, I think that's where our county attorney will have issued the documents issued.
I I I would be glad to do that, but I I would say that I can, as well liked as I am. There's always somebody, and that's what I I don't. I and people had called me because of the letters that did go out about this meeting. And people, Paul surprised me. Hadn't talked to me beforehand, but people had been coming in and saying, oh, my gosh, what's going on here? We'll be there. We're here to support. I said, no. I I'm gonna go to my own wife. I told her, stay home. I I don't want this to turn into a popularity contest. And that seems to be like what happens, like, no, we don't like him. I'm gonna tell you, there's somebody that doesn't like me. And they will come up with a hundred reasons why. I shouldn't do this.
That's why the idea of doing the covenants change because it's a majority vote. It's not one person. It's not this or that. If you can get that wording or or do away with them, whichever their choice is, but at least it's a group effort, not a single out type of.
Madam Chair, I was gonna mention to the, um, Commissioner Bangl. Would you consider it at least immediate, say, within a a quarter mile or immediate neighbors within that subject, simply because I do know in in such condensed, this was prior to a GR twenty, right? A lot of these lots in that subdivision are down to two, three, four acres. And I know there's fifty six land surface owners within. I just recently had to send mail. We probably got one. Um, about the expansion of my gravel pit. So I know there's a lot of neighbors in there. There's a huge, so if if what I'm hearing is immediate neighbors, minimum.
Just the people in that area that may be affected by this. Um.
I know the subdivision would be the better way to go, or
Yeah.
Be cleaner, change, cleaner.
Yes, and as someone who does the police reports, we could, there are some disagreements in court.
Okay, we need to keep moving, so we will, um, discuss this and and I guess let you know our thoughts. Get an opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next thing on our agenda, um, Jenny Kramer. Park County Planning and Zoning and Public Hearing Pioneer Place subdivision preliminary plat review. Thanks for your patience. Sorry, we're a little late.
Do you want that decision in January or is that one?
When I was.
Thanks, thanks. You've been very hot.
Yeah, you're thinking.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Hey. Ready?
Yes.
All right. Okay, so this is Pioneer Place subdivision preliminary plat review. And I will summarize the the staff findings for you, the key findings. On May twenty third, Rusty Blouse submitted a major subdivision preliminary plat application on behalf of the landowners, Van and Sherry Willett. The applicants request approval to vacate and re-subdivide Lot Two of Gillette MS dash sixty six into an eight lot subdivision consisting of six two point five zero acre lots and two three point five acre lots each for residential use. This classified as a major subdivision and is located approximately one and a half miles south of Powell. South of Lane eleven on the east side of Road Ten. The property is currently unaddressed. Notice requirements have been met. Relevant agencies were notified as required and responded as follows. Park County Fire District Number One is able to provide fire suppression. TCT has terrestrial wireless available in the area and can possibly provide internet and voice phone service. Depending upon line of sight and tower availability, USPS is available to provide mail service. A mailbox unit will be required, and they have provided guidance as to the placement of the unit to the applicant. Park County School District One confirms school bus services available. Powell Clarksport Conservation District provided a soils report indicating that soil types are considered not limited with regard to dwellings and small commercial buildings. Soil types are not considered to be prime farmland, and they're considered very limited with regard to septic tank absorption fields due to filtering capacity and slow water movement. Cheshone Irrigation District has been contacted and is working on a water distribution plan with the applicants. The district will allow access across a drain from the county road to the subdivision. Provided a thirty six inch culvert is installed at the crossing. Garland Light and Power has the capacity to serve the proposed subdivision. And has provided the applicant with estimates. Wyoming DEQ provided their standard response and agency contacts and information for permitting. NRWD stated the existing water mains are greater than four hundred feet from the proposed subdivision. Park County Treasurer reported the parcel was new for the two thousand twenty four tax year and no taxes are due at this time. Game and Fish Department has no terrestrial wildlife comments. MDU confirmed they have the capacity to serve the proposed subdivision. However, service is not within four hundred feet of the property. Park County Weed and Pest will require a copy of the subdivision covenants and an addendum to the existing long term noxious weed management plan for the property under Gillette North, what may be required. The applicant is currently proposing a twenty four foot wide gravel surface. Um, to local access road standards. Public Works stated the following, the subdivision is accessed by direct frontage to Park County Road Ten. A subdivision road is proposed as per part of the refer, as part of the reference subdivision development as depicted on the sketch plan and preliminary plat. A single road with a cul- cul-de-sac turnaround proposed to provide access to all eight subdivision lots. Is is also provided. Lot one and Lot Eight also have direct frontage to the county road. Plans for the new roadway shall be prepared by a Wyoming licensed professional engineer and submitted to Public Works for review and approval before construction commences. A right of way permit from Public Works will be required for any new accesses or improvements to existing accesses on Park County Road Ten. It is understood that the road will be developed as a residential road. I believe that's changed to a local access road with a minimum sixty foot wide right of way as depicted on the sketch plan. The applicant's current proposal to construct a twenty four foot wide gravel road is adequate. If the applicant opts to pave in the future. They have been provided administrative relief, um, and that will stand, allowing for twenty feet of the road surface to be paved, leaving two feet of gravel on either side. Addressing for the proposed development will be from the subdivision roadway. A stormwater runoff and erosion control plan shall be developed and prepared under a Wyoming licensed professional engineer, and the plan shall be approved by the county engineer before final approval of the plat by the county commissioners. Frontier Lane is the approved name for this proposed subdivision road. DEQ provided a response of no adverse recommendation based on their review of the proposed sewage system, water system, and groundwater. Wyoming Board of Control is also reviewing the applicant's application for the detachment of water rights and the water distribution plan. A written public comment was received on March fifteenth, and an additional written comment was received on um, August twenty sixth that should have been foregone to yesterday. And two additional neighboring landowners voiced concerns during the P and Z Commission Sketch Plan and plat preliminary plat public hearings. Concerns included the large number of recent subdivisions on affordable housing. Increased property taxes. Ag lands and losing wide open spaces. The applicants provided draft copies of the bylaws of Pioneer Place Subdivision Homeowners Association and their declaration of restrictions, conditions, and protective covenants for the subdivision. They have addressed ag impacts to and from subdivision. Submission requirements for preliminary plat review have been met. The applicants provided a copy of the water distribution plan and map to detach water rights. Those are currently with the state engineer's office for approval. Easements are shown on the preliminary plat. Um. In finding number thirty three and number thirty four, that has changed a little bit, um. He had initially had fencing consent from five of the six, and it sounds like one of the landowners has had a change of heart, so he was going to just go ahead with proceeding with fencing the subdivision. However, after reaching out to Cheshone Irrigation District this morning, he may have a little update and and potentially something to consider. Um. And he is also, well, a draft subdivision improvements agreement for roads, irrigation utilities, and potentially fencing is required at this time of by applied application. Um, we recommend approval. And we have a few conditions that that are recommended. I'll read those into the record for you. The applicant shall provide all easements as requested by applicable utilities and special districts, irrigation districts, or public agencies providing services. The width of any utility easement shall be sufficient to allow adequate maintenance of the system. But in no case shall such utility easement be less than twenty feet in width. Easements must be identified on the final plat. Number two, prior to the final plat review by the Board of County Commissioners, the applicant shall submit an approved water distribution plan by the Cheshone Irrigation District and the State Engineer's Office. Number three, prior to final plat review. The applicant shall provide a stormwater runoff and erosion control plan that has been approved by Park County Public Works to the Planning and Zoning Department. Number four. Prior to final plat review by the Board of County Commissioners. The applicant shall place the following condition on the final plat. Any access approach that is intended to serve the lots of the subdivision shall meet Park County Roden Bridge standards and will require a right of way permit from Park County Public Works Department. Number five, prior to final plat review by the Board of County Commissioners, the applicant shall place the following note on the final plat. Any proposed water wells on the subdivision lots shall be permitted by the Wyoming State Engineer's Office prior to installation. Number six, prior to final plat review by the Board of County Commissioners. The applicant shall place a notice of the Wyoming Right to Farm and Ranch Act of nineteen ninety one on the plat. Number seven, prior to final plat review by the Board of County Commissioners, the applicant shall provide evidence of one, an existing legal perimeter fence as prescribed by Wyoming Statute eleven dash twenty eight dash one oh two. Two, written consent from all adjacent landowners, a perimeter fence is not necessary. Or three, plans to construct a perimeter fence as required by statute and in accordance with Wyoming Statute eighteen dash five dash three oh six, A thirteen. Number eight, at the time submittal, uh, at the time of submittal of the final plat application, the applicant shall submit a draft subdivision improvements agreement addressing all applicable required improvements. Per review by staff and approval of the county attorney and the board. Number nine, prior to final plat review by the Board of County Commissioners, the applicant shall submit an HOA to address maintenance of shared facilities to the Planning and Zoning Department. And number ten. The applicant shall otherwise comply with standards in the Park County Development Regulations. And the minimum subdivision requirements as set forth in Wyoming Statute eighteen dash five dash three oh six. Thank you.
Answering the questions. Thank you. Are there any questions at this time for staff? Hearing none. This is a public hearing. Is there someone that would like to speak on behalf of the subdivision request? Anyone? Want to, you please come up to the microphone and identify yourself and record.
I'm Jeff Bowman. I've been here before. And, uh, I want to read mine because I can save time to make my point up through it. First, I would like to thank commissioners for the support and generosity uh, for supporting the new Powell Library. We're very excited about that. Um, after serving on the library board for six Um after serving on the library board for six years and looking with many good people, especially Pat Stewart, uh we're delighted that it's becoming reality. Uh the library promises to be a centerpiece of the community and a source of pride to Powell and Park County, so thank you. Uh now, a land issue. Uh the Powell Valley is one of the last settlements in the old west, thanks to the mighty Buffalo Bill Van. We became a thriving agricultural community with generations of families working the land and making honest lives. Now we have been discovered and development is crowding in. I don't blame people for wanting to move here and own a part of the west. And I'm aware of the new land use plan, however, I feel that an important consideration is being overlooked. After a life of hard work, I understand why farmers choose or have to sell their land to make a profit. They deserve that opportunity. What I don't understand is allowing productive fields to be hacked up into non-productive parcels two and a half and three acres. This size is too small to graze and too big to mow. You see it all over between Powell and Cody, either overgrazed and weeding or vast lawns endlessly mowed, watered and fertilized. The vitality and versatility of the land is lost. Once a subdivision goes in, there's no going back. The field in question is good ground and has been producing food and supporting families for over a hundred years. Over thirty years, we have lived next to it and seen big yields of beets, beans, barley and corn. Sheep and cattle have grown fat on that field. Not to mention thousands of bees and hundreds of deer that depend on it during the fall and winter. If you grant this request, all of that will be gone. We are being taken advantage of by outsiders intent on making the largest profits that we can. I see a wiser approach. Our home is in a subdivision. With lot sizes of five to seven acres with irrigation and good pasture management, we and our neighbors have successfully kept horses, mules, cows, sheep and other farm animals while maintaining a healthy population, pheasants and deer. Six acre particles maintain a level of productivity and offer relatively peaceful country atmosphere. Five or more acres is a useful and more sensible size. Horse property is in great demand, acreage enough to raise livestock sustainably is much more in keeping with the values of the original homesteaders who turn sagebrush flats into fertile fields. According to the University of Wyoming Extension Office, the carrying capacity for two horses or two cow calf units in the Powell area with irrigation and proper management is five to eight acres. Those who understand horses know that to be a healthy horse needs at least one companion and room to roam. That means in order to have a sustainable pasture, there should be no more than four lots on this twenty-two acre field. The ironically named Pioneer Place subdivision proposes to divide that land into the dreaded two and a half acre plots thus destroying its versatility and vitality. Once land is divided into these postage stamps, it is lost forever. Therefore, I strongly urge the committee, the commission to deny the increase in lot density on this fine piece of land. Um in addition, uh I was not aware that they could start developing before final approval. They've already put in a culvert, started building a road and appears to be digging foundation.
Thank you.
Well Jeff, I I understand your concerns and but when they come in and do stuff per regulation, it's really hard to say no. And I've said this for a long time, the folks that want to see this country remain open need to have some game in the game. And I'm not, I mean, I'm only a short timer, but I think but i- it's, I'm not going to be the one to regulate someone away from doing what is legally allowed right now. I I strongly support folks getting in the game and working towards something that will maintain the farmland, maintain the grassland. That's just my, that's my side.
I understand that.
Any other comments, Jeff? Any other public comments on the request, this subdivision? Any other public comments?
Issue.
Yes.
Sure.
Thank you, sir.
If um Dan Willett will now have to build a fence because of two or three neighbors that have decided they want the fence, but along the county road, there's a twelve to fourteen foot deep um Shoshone Irrigation ditch, drainage ditch. And they have a pretty wide it's a hundred foot wide right-of-way. So our opinion, the ditch is impassable for livestock if they were to cross the county road and then so we're wondering if there is a leeway to not have to build a fence along the irrigation ditch right-of-way when it's already impassable barrier. And he does have consent, yeah, from the owners across the county road. They do not want the fence necessarily. But since one owner has already said that he has to fence the subdivision.
I guess in thinking about looking at the state statute on the legally grazable, you know, lands as the, as the fencing thing reads. If you if you were to come out to the county road, you know, county roads not theoretically legal to graze, but ends up once in a while, but not, shouldn't be. But if you don't bring that fence clear out, then either on one side of the subdivision or the other, there's still that open space at the front of the subdivision because you're going to be backaways from that ditch and we don't know about the landowners on either side. How did we, I, this is a new statute to us too over the last year, so it's been hard to deal with.
Because I think county road right-of-way also falls within their easement and maybe, I don't know, if it'll be in the ditch and part of the areas, I think it probably would be down into the ditch, so you couldn't really fence along the county road right-of-way practically. And if the ditch district queens the ditch, then they can pick out the fence, so.
I'm not sure what the answer is going to be there.
Right.
Might be a legal question, but.
Okay. Yeah, we're trying to figure out how to navigate that and then you have the road, so you're not fencing across the access road, but and I don't know if that's come up yet either as far as.
It it has and that's where some of the discussion about county road right-of-way, it's not really grazable.
Right.
That's not what we consider county road rights a way to be. But so your subdivision access road, no, but the stuff on either side, if you can't come forward far enough um to meet that county road right-of-way and you're saying if irrigation district has another thirty or forty or fifty feet in there, that's an issue.
Right.
Madam Chair, my, I I understand part of this question and and the looking at is when they use sign the subdivision road coming in to it, it is also a subdivision, right? So I mean, a lot of this needs to be clarified, there's no question about it, but you can read it, it may need to put a a cattle guard or a fence across that road. Yeah, yeah. And and that, you know, I'm not seeing that
Right.
thing happen, but the way the statute reads, I believe that's, that way should, could be interpreted. This whole fencing statute needs a lot of and we're stuck in the middle right now with we can't go against it. So I mean, have you considered, I don't see on the plat here, I mean, a cattle guard coming off road ten.
And, yeah, we have to put that in, so far it wasn't
Plan, but I mean, since that's part of the fencing as well. I don't, not that I agree with it, but it is a part of the statute.
I don't think that's come up on other subdivisions we've approved with the fencing rule so far. Well, I'm not sure the county road right now is as much of an issue as that irrigation. That's much wider than the county road right-of-way because your, your two side fences can't come very far forward if irrigation district has a right to come through there, I think it does. Um the other letters. If you'll identify yourself for the mic, please.
Go ahead and come up if you could.
Hear real well in this room.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I don't need to interrupt, it just, right now it kind of applies. Um I believe that um
Your name?
Oh, sorry, Dan Willett, the owner of the property. If we were to build a fence all the way to the ditch on the north and south with gates, the irrigation district is okay with that, if you do gates, they just don't want to fence along the ditch. But I feel like that with the depth of the ditch and the owners across the road, um they have signed the fence in consent release form. So I, I think that would, that would to me make sense, but you know, it is uh your decision, so I just, I just wanted to say that, that irrigation district is okay with a gate across there and it's even in their bylaws and everything else about that, so.
One of the other concerns, and I believe it's on this one, in a landowner letter that we received had to do with an easement that went into his second lot as a different parcel behind it. And they want that easement removed if this subdivision goes through, I don't think we've seen that process happen before and I'm not sure what we do with that.
Yeah, I don't know that that's an option, just because it was, um it was an easement as part of Gillette North subdivision. Um but I will say that um that there, I don't know if you can see, so up here I believe is that easement he's speaking of, but they are proposing to come in from a separate, separate entrance um here to to place the road, so.
Yeah, he just didn't want, there was permission still granted through that many more people.
Oh, an irrigation easement, okay.
It can reason that's what this people requested.
Okay, gotcha.
And I'm at the same question.
I, I think it would have to be an amended.
That's what I'm thinking.
Amended plat, if it was on Gillette North, it would have to be amended and everyone would have to agree to to take that away. So I don't know how that works. Yeah, I mean, it's I don't think there's any, anything against it being I'm I don't think there were, there were any restrictions against, you know, further subdivision and the, the lots created by Gillette.
On the original.
Right, exactly.
So the easement that the neighbor wanted to get rid of is the irrigation easement on the east side of the property?
No, the northern side.
Northeast.
Oh, okay, I I was assuming it was the access easement.
Yeah. I don't think that's what he said, I can bring that.
Oh, okay.
It specifically says on your plat that existing existing agriculture irrigation easement benefits lot two of Gillette subdivision. If lot two does no longer exist, does that easement, I, I don't know what the legality is.
I, I believe the easement would still be a valid easement, even if it's further subdivided. Just, just like other access easements and stuff still are valid.
I mean, is it the landlord is the one that's requesting it, might not.
And I think it's, it's the easement to benefit lot two though.
Which lot two is what is what Dan has and it's being subdivided, I believe.
Because it, I think it's, it's just a wastewater ditch. And so if it's flooding this property, they would need to have access to be able to go clean it. And that was the only, I mean, that's the main purpose of the access easement, to access the ditch and maintain it so they could clean out the you know, an obstruction or something in a ditch to allow the wastewater to follow the ditch and not but the property or something, so I think it would need to be to me, it seems like it still need to be a
Yeah, and and basically what it says, Madam Chair, um that furthermore, the lot directly to the north that I own has an easement to the subdivision, this easement was initially placed so that the landowners would be able to work the land with their tractors for the pasture. I'd like to see the easement removed if there's going to be eight parcels because the intention was not to have traffic going over the property, which is also an agricultural lot currently and was subsequently interfere with their ability to water in that pasture.
So I, the way I read it, I, I think his understanding is that even though this is a subdivision lot, but maybe, maybe his understanding that would continue to be ag, but it sounds like he's talking about tractors accessing and whatnot, and that's the only access in is that easement, I, I think it is on the northwest, I think he's talking about that. Because it comes across his land, it comes across the, because of that big drain, there was just one access into these, into Gillette Minor. Um and it came through the lot to the north for lot two, so I, I believe that he was, he's concerned that they're accessing all of these lots will be accessing from that access is my understanding, but that's, yeah, not very clear. But I don't think on Gillette Minor that there were, I mean, there was there was nothing on the plat that stated it was for agricultural, I mean, it was to serve lot two for access. Knowing that it would be ag or residential.
But single owner, not necessarily a, there's a single owner.
Sure, sure. But, yeah, yeah.
I don't think so, I don't think so. That's something that might have to be checked.
But I, I think, yeah, yeah.
I don't believe the easement would be necessarily further if it was subdivided, just simply you just know you're going to have a road coming through the middle accessing all of those lots, but the cul-de-sac. And they probably provided that easement earlier because of that drain on the west side.
Yeah.
The easement in question is on the northeast corner. And they're going to be fencing across that anyway, so I mean, there's no reason that easement doesn't
That's true, it's just whether it takes an amended plat to remove it or not, and an amended plat would involve all of the landowners in their original subdivision. They have to sign off on an amended plat, so. It's a process. It is a legal question. Whether anybody else could use that or not, whether it exists in your new subdivision or not, doesn't mean they couldn't go on the old one if it was still on the old plat.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there any other public comment at this time on this preliminary plat review?
Madam Chair, you go ahead, sir. We close the public hearing.
They moved and seconded to close the public hearing, further discussion on the motion? Hearing done, all those in favor? Roger the board? Yes, sir.
I make a motion to commute this, the easement issue can be adjusted or figured out. Chair, we do that. Okay, I retract that. Okay, I retract that.
Again, we don't have to make a decision today. We can ask these legal questions and then make a determination as to moving forward. As to what the process might have to be.
Madam Chair, I'd also like to. See if there is some way to, to fix the fencing issue, what is and is required. I mean, if there's. I don't know what that is. It makes most sense to put the, the fence on the, on the east side of that drain, but that doesn't encompass the subdivision. So is that legal to do that?
Okay.
So that is another question besides the easement.
So fencing and the easement.
I wonder if you need a cattle.
Is that the pleasure board that we get more answers? So we'll wait on that decision. Okay?
I have one more. On condition eight. And we've had this discussion before, the wording needs to be changed that the county attorney cannot approve.
Oh, as to form, right?
As to form, yes.
And on the lot size issue, I would strongly suggest everyone be involved in the updated most regulations for your planning area. As that is where some of this will be discussed, as we know, the ballot is GRP with money for lots and. There's a lot of discussion about where we go with that. So as it goes over the next few months and you get notifications on the rules and regulations changes, I would suggest everybody get involved. So we can understand the lot sizes and water laws and things like that. Okay, thank you. We've had a break. It's, we're now six minutes into our next thing. This is a travel council appointment. And as you all are aware, this one is for a Yellowstone Park. Physician to be represented on the Park County Travel Council. Rick Holyhausen did it for like fifteen years. And he has retired, so this Michael Keller is basically. Over where Rick was, same type of position with Zanara, my. So that's what we have for an application.
Madam Chair, I move to. Appoint Mike Keller to the Yellowstone Park.
Second.
They moved and seconded to appoint Mike. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Want to oppose? Motion passes.
Madam Chair, now that we're three minutes ahead, I could, I'd like to congratulate.
Kelly?
Kelly, her primary win.
Yes.
She's still gotta get elected.
November, yes.
Mr. Mandgold.
You got two minutes to get poppy if you need it, but otherwise we'll just keep moving. Okay, I figured. If you'd all watch your emails too, for the dates, we did put out some initial dates for some more decisions. Rules and regs, so I know it's sunny season, I know that's a problem, but.
October first.
Yeah, and that's a regular thing that they need to do. That's not after noon, so that shouldn't be too big of a. Need to find my notes really. County Attorney on the. We have one couple of last three hours.
I have to see you guys five spring weeks.
What's that?
With Waco, I have to see you guys for five spring weeks.
Geez, I'm sure sorry. Scott? You thought football season, you'd get out of seeing us, but it's up.
That's pack out for a summer trip.
Oh, my gosh. That's a great picture, though. A little bit of snow.
Packing out on a summer trip.
Great.
What's that? I see that little snowing up in the light.
Where was that at?
Uh, we were over in East Worthen. At about ten. Here, I think we're ten, ten, three.
Then I gotta stamp all these and you're gonna want your stamps, guys, once you're gonna sign. Okay. Next thing on our agenda, Wyoming State Shooting Complex, discussion of Joint Powers Board. As we left things a couple of weeks ago, we were deciding. On management style and there were a few discussions about how to move forward with that. Talked about putting that board together. And the city of Cody with some members. I had a discussion with the county attorney yesterday. And in looking at the process, it's pretty clear in the state statutes that the agreement for the Joint Powers Board. Sets up the Joint Powers Board. So we have to do the agreement first and we have to get that through the state attorney general's office for approval. So the county attorney and the city attorney, if that's how we decide to set this up. Would both be reviewing whatever we decide to send to the state for representation and getting this board set up. So what we would be looking for today is an agreement from the commissioners to. Pursue a joint powers board agreement to manage the Wyoming State Shooting Complex. That comes to that.
So we need to make action to.
The agreement first.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to move forward with the pursuit of an agreement and formation of a joint powers board for the Wyoming State Shooting Complex. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
What is, is, are we tasking, it's our county attorney and the city attorney coming up with this agreement? I didn't think.
No, no, he asked, I kind of gave him the draft that had been provided by the committee two weeks ago. He's reviewing that a little bit. There's obviously gonna be a few tweaks and changes, but I think. If it's okay with the commissioners, we'd like the committee to still move forward with getting that wording sorted out. As to what we think the best setup will be. And then the county attorney will review that with the city attorney and city council. I guess to make sure that they're okay with how we want to move forward before you think it's sent to Cheyenne. It can be a two to three to four month process when it gets to Cheyenne. There is no guarantee of how soon it could be returned. So if time is of the essence to keep moving after February and March, if in fact it gets approved at the state level. We need to kind of keep moving to get this on its way to Cheyenne. That was his thoughts about this. Yes, sir.
Madam Chair, just for the record again, I support the shooting complex. Contradictory to social media. I just simply was on the road.
Former Ryan O'Carroll.
I'm not sure how to answer someone, just a second.
Was there any discussion with county attorney of what if the process could be to abolish the joint powers?
It's part, it's in the agreement. When we make that process together, it does both. At least the agreements I've seen with the shown pipeline and.
We want the agreement to address that as well. There's all, just in event that something happens in Cheyenne, this thing doesn't go through, we don't get locked in or something, can't get out of it.
Right, yeah, agreed. Agreed, yes. Mr. Plus, can you come to the mic, please, and identify yourself because the recording and. The sound system in this room.
Thank you for allowing us to, to be here today. James Clessens forward with Cody with members of the. Task force local to work on the joint powers board. We do have a, an agreement and we're getting our wording and our language to where we need it to be. Since we've spoke with you last, we have. Added some positions to it. Instead of a six person board, it'll be nine. That was a recommendation that was made. And we have them divided, six to the county, three to the city, that would be appointed and representing different entities and we'll make that, make that available to you. We, we do have a dissolution clause in any event that there's something that needs to change. That certainly is in order. What I'll tell you is this joint powers agreement that we drafted. Basically comes exactly verbatim off of the Park County Travel Council's one that was revised two years ago. And so I think with what we've given or put together. With the county and the city attorneys review to make sure that all of the legal terminology is correct. Should have something that we can send to the attorney general relatively soon. So with that, we'd appreciate your support, always have and always will.
Would you forward that to me to get to the county attorney?
I will. I brought copies for you today, but when we were sitting in the hall, we found some typos and so we're gonna fix those before we give you.
Then I can get with him and we can see what the timeline.
Would it be appropriate for me to send it to him directly?
It's fine. I just need to be sure that he gets it, so.
No, that's okay.
Just email us.
Okay, appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other thoughts or concerns? Okay, we'll keep moving forward. Thank you. Thanks for coming up. There is. Okay, so, yeah. Start and go the other way.
Yeah, blue, blue, we're even standing.
I think you used to have one. That's my door.
I'm just finishing, so I can put it away. There's two more things on the side in the other book.
See how nicely organized this one is, it keeps claiming this door.
Yeah, it's not. I must have really. Laborer. I really told somebody to go just down when they moved my stuff back.
That's all my stuff, for cheese sake.
Well, I know I didn't have it before. It'll be distributed in my.
Yeah, well, then I'll take care of that if you don't mind.
He's been looking for somebody to fix it.
I come back, it's like, what's all this junk in my pants?
I had a clock in mine.
I come back and it's like I turned it upside down and shook it pretty bad.
Oh, my gosh, yeah.
What else could you have for us, Madam Chair?
I have, I'm gonna send you some information. We did receive a resolution request for approval from the. Three oh seven racing, which we put on the ballot two years ago. They've sent an updated resolution, but in reviewing that with the county attorney yesterday, there are some concerns over the statute numbers that were used in the resolution because they have changed. And there is a statement in the resolution that also includes the words. And the future thoughts or something like that. So it's not specific. And the county attorney isn't comfortable with that, so we were gonna check into a couple of things, because when you read the statutes, it could include a whole lot of things. So we're looking at it, but it'll be on next week's agenda.
No.
Yell that in the chuckles?
I think that's all. Lloyd and I met with the irrigation districts in their quest to figure out how to save ag lands, Scott, yes. Yeah, how to save ag lands and they're having some thought processes and I just don't know how that's gonna go. So we'll keep you updated if something comes from that. There's some interesting. You know, we talked about that. We have a penny. I did bring that up because I said that they kept saying the public wants us to save ag lands. Well, it's a public wants us to save ag lands. It may be that we put it in the ballot because. I don't know where else that money would come from. If we're doing conservation easements and things like that, or even Happus Center, you know, whatever could be done, but. So I don't know, but those thoughts, it needs to come from them, but we did throw out some ideas on the list to look at. And they're coming up with some thoughts. They have some questions about whether irrigation districts can. Like when they talk about these subdivisions and the change in water rights. They're questioning why the subdivision can't just come to the irrigation district. And they can't just do that in-house rather than the whole process through the state and county office. And if we know. Years ago, they only met quarterly, so it's really hard to get things through that water board at the state level. Now they're meeting monthly, so things are a little further. I don't know, those are their, their issues, but they did ask us to weigh in a little bit. Okay. Have a motion to adjourn. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Thank you. Okay, and you'll get Tuesday's agenda probably on Friday since Monday is a holiday. Okay. Okay. Okay.